Given for question and answer session.
ओके दिनमो प्रश्न अतराला सामयम येव बढिंदी?
So they asked him.
मरी आयन अडिगिनारु?
Several questions they asked.
चाला प्रश्न अडिगिनारु?
One of them was.
अंदलो ओका प्रश्न एंट एंट?
How come you are managing this such a great work?
मरी इन्ता गोप्पा पनि नी नु ये रीतिका कोनसागिस्तिन चगल्गुतुनो?
From where did you get this word?
मरी ई वाक्यमुनीकू एकड़ा निंचे वच्चिक्छिंदी?
He pointed towards his knees.
मरी अतनैक वेलु चेप्पिमा आयन रेण्डु मूड गांटल मात्रमै पडुकुनेवार?
More time he spent with the Lord on his knees.
मरी चाला सामयमो तन मोकालमेदा प्रभुतो गडपेवारु?
So what God has revealed to him?
मरी ये देते प्रभु आयनकू बैलपर्छ?
On the Mount of Palavarum near airport in Madras.
मरी मद्रास एयरपोर्ट दगरुन्ना पलवरपु कोण्डलमेदै?
All the senior brethren gathered there.
मरी आकड़ा सीनियर सहोदरलान्ता कोड़ा आयनतो कुडिनारु?
Before they started off in Jehoshama in nineteen forty-one, in December, July twelfth.
मरी जोले पनिंडो तारिकना पंथम्मन्दल नल्पैउटो साउचलो जयोश्वा प्रारमिचिता, जयोश्वमा प्रारमिचितानिकी मुंदू?
They gathered in Palavarum Mount.
मरी पलवरपु कोण्डलमेदा वर्क कुडिनारु?
And they prayed.
मरी आकड़ा प्रार्धिंछिनारु?
And also one brother was awake, all through the others are closing their eyes and praying, one brother would be awake, with the petromax light, and keep killing the scorpions and centipedes around them.
मरी अवाल्लू कलिसी अकोण्डमेदा प्रार्धिस्तिन चुंडिका, पेट्रोमाक्लाइस पेटिनोका सहोदर मेलुकुगाउंडी, आ वेल्थरको चेट्टै वंदी तेलनु जरुल्नु मरी चंपुतावच्छिनारु?
Yeah, that was how it was.
मरी आदि आ रीतिका जरिगिंदी?
Then after prayer was over.
मरी प्राधन आइपैन तर्वाद?
That brother said.
मरी आ सहोदर जप्पा?
Who was awake, brothers, so many scorpions and centipedes around us.
मरी मेलुकुगाउंडम चाला तेलु जरुलु वच्छिनाय?
Then brother Baxing said.
मरी साउर्ड बैक्सिंगार चेप्पारु?
God is foretelling us.
मरी देवुड़ मुंदिगामनक चेप्ताउन?
He is informing us beforehand.
मरी मुंदिगाने मनकु बैलपर्स्ताउन?
How we may have to work in the midst of scorpions and centipedes?
मरी आयका तेलु जरुलु मज्जा मनम ये रीतिका पनिचैयालो देवुड़ बैलपर्स्ताउन?
So God four shadows.
मरी देवुड़ मुंदिगाने चाय बैलपर्स्त?
Even when Moses got the wonderful vision on Horeb.
मरी होरेबलो मोशे अद्भुतमाइन एट्वेंटी दर्शनमो पन्दक मुंदू?
God revealed himself.
मरी देवुड़ तन्नु ताने आयनकू बैलपर्छ?
As God of Abraham, God of Isaac, God of Jacob.
मरी अब्राहाम देवुड़गा, इस्साकु देवुड़गा, याकोब देवुड़गा बैलपर्छ?
From where did he speak?
मरी एकड़ा निंचे आयन माट्लान?
What was the background?
मरी रानी विनुक्क चरित्र एंट?
There was a bush.
मरी आकड़ा मंडुचुन्ना पदलोंच?
It was on fire.
आदि अग्नि मंडुताउंदी?
But the bush is not consumed.
आइते आयका पोदा काली पोलेदु?
The green area of the bush is still maintained.
मरी आयका अग्नि आ पोदा अला मंडुताउंदी?
A green is not burnt, it is still there.
आइते आयका पोदा मरी पच्चदनमुगा अलागा कन्नबर्दाने उंदी अग्नि मंडुताउ?
But still it is in the midst of the fire.
आयनापड़की दानी मज्जलोंची अग्नि मरी मंडुताउ?
What do we understand from that?
दानिंची मनम ये मार्दन जस्त?
Thereby, Lord revealed even to Moses at that time.
मरी आ सामयमलोने देवुड़ मोशेकु बैलपर्छ?
येंगावाल्सर मुकु, येंदो आयन आलोजिस्ताउन? Switch off एंट सर?
दाईजे स्विच off चेन्दनमी फोनस?
So, God has revealed to Moses.
मरी देवुड़ मोशेकु प्रत्यक्ष पर्छिकुन?
How his people are going to suffer?
मरी तन प्रजलु ये रीतिका श्रमपर्तुनारो?
How his people are going to suffer?
मरी तन प्रजलु ये रीतिका मरी श्रमपर्ताउन?
श्रमपर्वल्स उस्तुन्दो?
श्रमपर्वल्स उस्तुन्दो?
But yet they will not be consumed.
आयनापड़की कोड़ा वारु नशिंच्या पोलेदु?
The work will not be terminated.
मरी आयका पनि तोलिगिंच्छबरलेदु?
Work will not stop.
मरी आ वर्कको पनि आपिवे बरलेदु?
Even when Moses died.
मरी मोशे चनिपैनापड़की?
Lord said to Joshua.
मरी यहोश्वतो प्रभु जप्पिन?
Children of Israel mourned for the death of Moses for thirty days.
मरी इसरायल प्रजलु मोशे मरनंकोरकु मुप्पे दिनालु विलापिंछिनारु?
And Joshua chapter one was true.
मरी यहोश्वाग्रांधा मध्य अज्जम रेण्डो वच्छिमलो?
He says, "My servant Moses is dead."
ना सैवु कुडाइना मोशे मृति पन्देन?
Now Joshua, arise, take my people.
मरी यहोश्वा इपुनु लेची ना प्रजलु तिस्कुनेवेलमो?
To the promised land.
मरी वाक्दानम चेबन्ना?
That's how Joshua was given responsibility.
ई रीतिका यहोश्वा को आ बाज्यता अपगिंच्छबरिंदी?
God prepared him already.
मरी अपड़के यहोश्वानु देवुड़ सिद्धपर्छ?
But when Moses died.
एप्राइते मोशे मरनिंछिनारो?
He did not come forward to take up that responsibility.
आ बाज्यता तिस्कोडानका आयन मुंदुकरालेदु?
Though already the charge was given.
मरी अपड़के आ बाज्यता अपगिप्पबर्ना?
But yet, he waited until Lord commissioned him for that great task.
मरी आ गोप्पा पनिकोरको प्रभु आ बाज्यता पनि अपगिंचेन्तो वर्क आयन वेचिनारु?
And then after that morning.
मरी आ एक विलापम आइपैन तर?
Lord tells him.
मरी प्रभु आयनकू जप्पिन?
My servant Moses is dead.
ना सैवु कुडाइना मोशे मृति नंदेन?
Now Joshua, arise and take my people.
इपुरे यहोश्वनु लेची ना प्रजलु वाक्दान देश्यमलो निक तिस्कुन?
What did Lord say?
मरी प्रभु येम जप्पिन?
My servant Moses is dead.
ना सैवु कुडाइना मोशे मृति नंदेन?
In that he is saying.
मरी आयन जप्ताउन?
It is my servant who is dead.
मरी ना सैवु कोड़ा मृति नंदिन?
It is my servant who is dead.
ना सैवु कोड़ा मृति नंदिन?
But I am the master.
नेनु यजमान?
I am still alive.
नेनींका सज्युन?
So my cause and my work will continue.
ना आयका पनि आदि कोनसागुताउंदी?
So God's work will continue.
मरी देवुनी पनि कोनसागुतुंदी?
As for him, his way is perfect.
मरी आयना मट्टिकाइते आयन मार्गमो यदार्धमाइन?
God kept brother Baxing alive for several years when he was seriously sick.
मरी साउर्ड बैक्सिंगारु, मरी एन्तो तीव्रामाइना अनारोग्यानकी गुराइनापड़की कोड़ा कोणी साउचला आयन सज्युर्गाउंचिन?
God did not take him.
मरी देवुड़ वेंटने आयन तिस्कोले?
That was actually, I preached once in Hebron when he was still alive.
मरी आयना सज्युर्गाउंडा पुरे Hebronलोक सार्ने बोधिंछन?
God kept him alive so that he may be a constant reminder for all those who are following the Lord.
मरी यवराइते आयन, मरी प्रभुनी व्यंबरिस्ताउंछिनारु, वरंदरनी आयन ज्ञापकम चेटकै प्रभु आयन सज्युनिगाउंछिन?
There were many who followed him.
मरी चाला मंदे आयन व्यंबरिंछर?
From close quarters, very close to him.
मरी आयनकी एन्तो सन्निहितंगा उंदी व्यंबरिंछिन?
But towards the end of his ministry, the emceesels could not cooperate with him.
मरी परिचर्य आकर दिनालो वारे आयनतो सहकरिंचल?
So God kept him a constant reminder, making him alive even in that condition so that we may be reminded again and again what he preached among us.
मरी आज दिन आ सामयलो कोड़ा आयन सज्युर्गाउंची एड़तेकका प्रभु वारकी ज्ञापकम जस्ताउन, ज्ञापकम जस्तो वच्छिन?
But yet we have not learned.
आयनापड़की कोड़ा वर नेचकोले?
We were singing that song.
मनम आ पाट पाटाउन?
इन्नी पलवरम?
पलवरपु प्रत्यक्षत?
Ah, it was. Ah, that is a wonderful song.
आदि अद्भुतमाइन एट्वेंटी पाटा?
पलवरपु प्रत्यक्षतलु मरिचितिमी मनमान्दरम.
पलवरपु प्रत्यक्षतलु मरिचितिमी मनमान्दरम.
परी आडमच्युपर्न?
मरी एकड़ा मच्युपर्न?
Watch night services are still going on.
मरी वाचनाइट सर्विसल जरुताउन?
Youth camps are going on.
यवनस्तल कुडिकल जरुताउ?
VBS is going on.
मरी विराम पाइपल पार्ट साल?
Special meetings around the world are going on still.
प्रभंच व्याप्तंग इंका प्रचय कुडिकल जरुता?
Convocations are also going on.
मरी आका परिशुद्ध समाज कुडिकल कोड़ा जरुता?
Sisters' meetings are also going on.
सहोदरीला कुडिकल कोड़ा जरुताउ?
And also open air preaching is still going on.
मरी बहिरंगा विदेश स्वातल कोड़ा जरुताउ?
But where did we lack?
आइते एकड़ा मनम कोदु?
All those things brother Baxing had introduced, they are still are going on.
मरी सहोदर बैक्सिंगारु परिचय जस्तन एट्वेंटी प्रति परिचर्यलु कोनसागुताउ?
But where did we wrong?
आइते एकड़ा मनम तपिप?
Why there is no that thirst, that punch, that force in our midst?
मना आयका मज्जलो आ त्रुष्ना, आ बलमाइन एट्वेंटी कोरिका एन्दुकलेदु?
Because.
एन्दुकन?
We are confined to organizational things.
मरी आर्गनाइजेशनल विष्यालकी मनमो अपगिंच्छुनिंचन?
Ah, we are doing administrative work.
मनमो मरी एडमिनिस्ट्रेटु पनिजस्ताउन?
We are managing and maintaining all these meetings.
मरी ई कुडिकल अन्नितनी कोड़ा मनम निरोजिस्तो वाटनी चूस्कुन्तावस्त?
But we are not really be benefited by the word that is being ministered unto us in all these occasions.
मरी ई संदर्भल अन्नितलो मरी वाक्य परिचर्य चेस्नटिंदी, वाक्यमुचैता मनम लाभम पन्दलै?
God speaks to us even in VBS.
मरी VBSलो कोड़ा देवुड़ माट?
God can speak to us even the children's, sisters' meeting.
Sisters' meetingलो कोड़ा देवुड़ माट्लाड?
Youth meeting also, it is not just only for youth, God can speak to us also.
मरी आ यवनस्तल कुडिकल केवलम यवनस्तलक मात्रमैकाद मनतो कोड़ा देवुड़?
There is so much of what is ministered unto us.
चन्तो देवुनीका वाक्यमो मनको परिचर्य चेबरिंदी?
Nowhere else, no other assemblies have got this privilege of listening to the word of God.
मरी मिगिल्ना संगाल, सहवासलो चूस्ते इन्ता वाक्यमो बिने आदिक्यत वारकलेदु?
What do we read in Acts chapter two verse forty-two?
अपोसल कार्यमलो रेण्डु नल्परेण्डलो एम चद्दुत?
Acts of Apostles.
अपोसल कार्यमलो?
Chapter two.
रेण्डा अज्जाय?
Verse forty-two.
नल्परेण्डा वच्छिन?
They continued steadfastly in apostles' doctrine, fellowship, breaking up bread and in prayer.
वारु अपोस्टल आ बोध यान्तुनो, सहवासमयान्तुनो, प्रोट्टेवर्चिडयान्तुनो, प्राधनचेटयान्तुनो एड़तेकका युंडरी?
There was a continual devotion to the meditation of the word of God.
देवुनीका वाक्यमो परिचर्यकी एड़तेककुन?
Continual devotion.
मरी एड़तेकका, एड़तेकका भक्तिकलियन?
That would mean, there was a continual obedience to the word of God.
आदि देवुनीका वाक्यानकी एड़तेकका विदेत चूपिं?
Yeah, that was what was going on in the first century.
मटमटिसताब्दलो इदे जरिगिंदी?
Word of God says this.
मरी देवुनीका वाक्यम जप्ताउन?
So I live like this.
मरी नेनु ई रीतिका जस्तन?
Application and appropriation of the word of God was very much in vogue.
मरी आदिनलो देवुनीका वाक्यमो, मरी अन्वयिंच्छकोड़मो एन्तो एकुगाउंदी?
Ah, many times we keep thinking.
चाला सारल मनम आलोजिस्ताउन?
Ah, one kabi, one poet wrote like this.
मरी ओका कवि ई रीतिका रास्न?
कोई लौटादे मुझे बीते हुवेदिन? तिलिद? कोई लौटादे मुझे बीते हुवेदिन, गतिंचिन दिनालने, मरला आयन मनम मजिक दिस्कोले स्थे एन्तो बागुंडू?
गतिंचिन दिनालायन मरला मनम मजिक तिस्कोस्ते एन्तो बागुंडू?
गतिंचिन दिनाल मनम मजिक राव?
गतिंचिन दिनाल मनम मजिक राव?
मनम आ दिनाले फोले?
मनमी आ दिनाल ने गिर्गिप?
We have to behave how they behaved at that time.
मरी आ सामयलो वार ये रीतिका जिविंछिनारु, अला मनम प्रावर्तिं?
We have to obey as they obeyed at that time.
आ सामयलो यला वार विदेत चूपिंछिनारु, अला मनम?
Then how, there should be a continual devotion to the word of God by strict obedience to the word of God.
आकानान्बटि देवुनीका वाक्यमेदला, देविकमाइन एट्वेंटी भक्तिनी मनम कलिकिदानिक लोबर?
We may have several themes in several meetings.
मरी मनलो आ कुडिकल कलिगिं?
Our, कुडिकल काल्द, teams, teams.
मरी आयका मुख्यामसाल मनम कलिगिं?
God serves with much prayer, they give teams for the meetings.
मरी देवुनी सैवुकुलो, मरी एन्तो प्रार्धिंची भारमता आम्शलिस्तार?
What is your team?
मनम एम ते आलोजिस्ताम?
What is our team?
मनयका मुख्य आम्शमैम?
Ah, you know because of the echo, he is not able to hear, I am also not hearing him. ये माइक? आदि कंट्रोल?
ई माइक मार्छन?
आसु माइकलापु चन्तो हाय गुंडर?
इत्तरेस?
प्रसान? So, we have to obey to the word of God.
मनमु देवुनीका वाक्यानकी विदेत?
As they obeyed at that time.
मरी आ दिनालो वार ये रीतिका विदेत चूपिंछिनारु, अला चूपिं?
Then automatically there would be return of those days.
मरी आनको आकस्मात्का दिनाल तिरीक मरला वस्त?
How they were strict in taking part in the table of the Lord?
वाल्लू यलागा, मरी प्रभुयका बललो यदार्धम्गा पालप?
What type of healthy, holy conversation or fellowship they had with each other?
मरु वकर्तो वकरो एन्ता आरोग्यवंतमाइन एट्वेंटी सहवासानी वार कलिगिन?
How they were prayerful in the house of God?
मरी ये रीतिका वार देवुनीका मंद्रमलो प्राधन जस्तो वच्छिन?
Our spiritual level in every assembly is measured in terms of people who attend the church on prayer day.
मरी सुक्रो, प्राधना दिनम रोजना एन्तमंदाइते, मरी कुडिककुवस्तारो, दानिमेदा मन आत्मेता संगमलो कलवे, कल्तवे?
संगमयका आत्मेत?
आ संगमयका आत्मेता कल्तवे?
चापल कोड़ पुर्तिगै?
चापल कोड़ा पुर्तिगै?
आदि वाला अविस्वास?
वारी अविस्वास?
वाला अविस्वासन बट्ट अन्तत?
आला अविस्वासन बट्ट अन्त अलाग?
They spread mats only up to certain level.
मरी चापलु कोण्त वारके वेस्त?
I told our people, young people in Jehoshama, Madras, Hebron, Hyderabad.
मरी Hebron, Hyderabadलो यवनस्तलतने चप्पन?
I said even on prayer meeting, spread the mats as you spread it for Bible study.
मरी Bible studyके ये रीतिका चापल ऐस्तार, आ रीतिका चापल पर्चालन जप?
Ah, so we used to do that.
मेम आ रीतिका चेस्स?
But how many come?
मरी एन्तमंद?
I want to tell you.
नेन चप्प?
It is only in Hebron.
Hebronलोन?
Hyderabad.
Hyderabad?
Total attendance for the prayer meeting.
मरी प्राधना कुडिकल गो अटेन्डन?
Only total attendance in Hebron prayer meeting.
Hebronको अप्लो, प्राधना कुडिककु हाजराइन वार मत्तम?
Yeah, अन्दर वस्त?
अन्दर वस्त?
वेरे चोट एकड़ा नेन जुल?
वेरे चोट एकड़ा नेन चोल?
आरु येड मंद?
आरु येड मंद?
In some places only two or three along with the God servant.
मरी कोणी प्रांतल एदरमुग्रु देवुनी सैवुकु?
That is why our churches are going on like this.
मरी मन संगालनी अंदके ई रीतिका उंद?
That joy is missing.
मरी आयका संतोषमो कोल्प?
That peace, that positive understanding is missing.
मरी समस्त ज्ञानमुकुमिंचिन देवुनी समाधान अनुपिंचल?
And that power and punch and force is also missing in our midst.
मज्जा देवुनीका क्षममो बद्रता कोड़ा कोल्प?
We lack power and force to attract others into the world of God.
मरी?
We lack in our life that spiritual power and strength which can attract others into the world of God.
मरी मिगिल्नु वारनी देवुनीका सनिदलोनिकी आकर्षिंचिनानिक कावस्नटुन, आ बलमु शक्ति आकर्षण मनकोल्प?
You know why?
एन्दुक?
We are not able to walk worthy of the Lord.
एन्दुकन? प्रभुकु तगिनत्लिगा मनम नड़वलेक?
Ah, only gappalgud? Through our worship and our prayer.
मन प्राधनद्वारा, आराधनद्वारा केवलम गप्पल?
माटलु कोटल?
माटलु कोटल?
मनम मात्रम आकड़े?
मनम मात्रम आकड़े?
That is the state of affairs.
मरी इदे आ व्यवहारिक?
So if we have to come to the return of those days.
मरी आ दिनालकी मनम तिरीकी रावल?
We have to go to those situations.
आ परिस्थितिलकी मनम तिरीकी वेलल?
As they prayed, we should also pray.
आवार प्राधन चिन रीतिका मनम प्रार्ध?
There was one Abishayam in our midst.
मनम मज्जा ओका Abishayam गारुन?
He was in our, from our hometown Gudur.
मरी आयना मयका सोग्रामाइन गुडुरकी चेन्द?
He was posted in a village.
मरी आयनको ग्राममलो मरी सैव?
Savocation?
सैवक?
So one day, the prayer meeting.
ओके दिनाना प्राधन कुडिक?
He was sitting, in front of him, one elder was sitting.
मरी आयन मुंदू ओका पेतकुचिन?
Entire hall was empty.
मरी आयका हाल अंता काली?
Very, very sad thing.
मरी एन्तो दुर्दश्त कर्माइन संगति?
Then that brother said.
आ सहोदर जप्पा?
He prayed.
मनम प्रार्धिस्त?
Then he prayed.
मरी आयन प्रार्धिंच?
Began the meeting.
पकुडिक प्रारमिच?
And then he announced a song.
मरी पाटा प्रकटिंचिन?
Then he told that brother.
आ सहोदर तो जप्पा?
Please, you continue, brother, I will come.
मरी आया, मेर पाटन पाटाउन? नेन वस्तन?
Then he took a cycle.
तर्वाता आयन साइकिल?
Went from house to house.
मरी प्रति इंटिकी वेलन?
आर प्रार्धन जस्तुन? क्रेम जस्तन?
आकड़ा प्राधन जस्तन? इंटिदेक्रम रे?
Go!
मरी गलन?
And they obey him.
मरी आयन वारक विदेत?
He went from house to house in that village.
आ ग्राममलो उन्ना ट्वेंटी प्रति इंटिकी साइकिल मेदा वेलन?
The whole congregation was present there.
तर्वाता समाजमंता कुडिक?
We cannot do that in cities like this.
whatever you are new way allow not put it in whatever level you are serving the Lord new yes style or Prabhu service to not put it
you will not prosper as long as you cover sins secret faults in your life
need you to them like the crumble or ahasya papum alone you capo gunna like they new what they love
David praise
marry David pradinchar
Psalm nineteen verse twelve
marry Kirtana pantom D V at panindlo
Lord cleanse me of my secret faults
I have Deva na rahasya papum look cheminchemo
Ah something that you are doing your wife may not be knowing
marry new yeah though just now no I didn't he bar you could tell you do
something you are doing your husband is not aware
new yeah though just now or ahasing God in the bar to get there
you some parents you are doing your children not aware
marry Talidand low rahasing Aedha just now or the
children you are involved in certain things your parents may not be aware
pillow yeah though telling rahasya karial just now or a Talidand look
believers of today you are doing something but the church is not aware of it
marry Visvasulga E didan rahasenga Edo mir just now or the Sangamo era Kunda undi
this also applies to the God servants and elders of the church
marry this Koda Devani Savakuluku peddala Koda Anvist on the
you are doing something somewhere but congregation is not aware
new Eka do Edo rahasenga just now or the sama Jana Kiti leadam led
we God's people
manamood Devani Prasimga
in God's place
Devani stallamlo
under God's rule
marry Devani paripalakina
we should be a open book
manamood terava badina postkamole undali
we should be like peer soap
manamood peer soap gavundali
you understand that
marry peer soap and art them in then
you can see through and through
marry appear soap and just stay at the power Drishing on did to just start on that
lopel amundu this part
lopel amundu can apart
regzona la can apart
regzona la can apart
hamam la can apart and Shintala can apart
Shintala can apart
there are so many shows you cannot see anything inside
marry Chala sablo naikani here peers la can apart and end la can
many are like the sub sub
marry my my little one Anta Koda ah peer subu gaakonda my little sabula on
by talkity
by talkity
lohno gati
lopel agati
fine a pataram
lohna lotaro
so Ari Ari lowa baatul Siri you know in our childhood
myka Bali Dinalo
we used to seek guriginja
manamood guriginja chussewa
we refer to us a guriginja
guriginja pray na
chola Chana mandu patramasal chola
patnam la onna waalaki Chala man
name chussewa guriginja
name guriginja chusse
there is a proverb
marry aka Sameth
see the proverbs that are there in the proverbs in our Bible
manal Bible onna Sameth lo
and also peddol who there are a lot of proverbs they have said
marry peddol chaala mandi Samethal Jepinar
they are all very meaningful
marry war Jepina twenty Samethal chaala arthavam
you can connect them directly to our situations
ah what in a man a peristhite Kineer gaana sandaram just go
guriginja gunchival EJ prarthelshna
guriginja gunchival EJ prarthel
guriginja kindah onna nalupu thanik telee danta
guriginja kindah onna nalupu thanik telee danta
what is guriginja
marry guriginja
it is a crimson red seed
marry Adi Yara Gavuntundi
fine on time crimson red very red blood red
marry Raktam Yara Gavunata painantaya
very shining red
marry Anto Meriset want to airpugal
underneath some portion is black
Ite aginjaka kinde baga mona konchum Nala Gavuntundi
so guriginja it says does not aware of the black underneath
marry guriginja Kida na kinnon na nalupu gunchi Dani Adi Yara Gado
nendu do anta show Gavunano
nendu show Gavunano
by anta colorful Gavunano
anta colorful Gavunano
kinnon nalupu thani Yara Gada
kinnon na nalupu Adi Yara Gada
yeah one Nata nalupu Gunda
eh atu want to nalupede na
think about it
Dhanagurin Chalo
there may be something like that
marry Arithika Edo Kond
there may be something hidden agenda you know hidden agenda
marry rahasenga Daacha Badna agenda
there is a political party
marry political party lo
when they came to reign in India in the central government
marry central government la paripalajyadaan question
there was a talk about hidden agenda
marry Daacha Badna twenty agenda gunchi matla
you know all there is some other aim which is hidden
marry awari akka paripalajyadaaniki verako udeshamu mansala unda
we should be open
manamood terava badna waarga undal postkamole
if you continue to cover your sin
nee papum nee o capo Kunte
word of God says he will not prosper at all
nee Devani walk in Jepindi new E mahtramo marry Abiruddhi Chandavu
as long as you cover those sins
marry anta kaalamai te nee o what in a capo Kunta
you cannot have the return of those days glorious days
ah mahimukaramayana twenty Dinalo Kono Tiri Ki Raalevo
when the word of God was preached in Jehovah's Hamah
Eho Shama lo Devaneka walk him practice
in the early parties
marry pantom naal paya
people even the believers were convicted of their sins
marry present look Kev Visvasul Koda war opimpaba de war
they were born again
war Tiri Genmichinva re
but they were still they are holding certain things which they have acquired because of some lying or bribe
marry war konchum katnam this Koda or no leda abadmaa Dora konni Sangat lo wall ro rahasya Jitmla undavi
ah there those items are still there
ayaka Vishyal wall Hrodiala undavi
they all wept when the brother boxing gave the word
marry they boxing Garu Devaneka walk him each day that Puru wall opimpaba de war
and they all came to brother boxing
sour boxing Gare dakrika wall Anta
they said brother we are born again baptized
sour Dada memu Dakshincha badi Baptesam Pundina
laid hands and prayed also
ma meda cheetleunchi Koda Asthenic shape
but still there are certain items in our homes
aina putge konni akka vestulu mindlo nae
which we have amassed acquired by wrong means
marry topuru kariala chasei ah vestulu ma grhala Kete
and that is troubling our conscience
avi avi ma manasakshin ni ibbandi
now today God has spoken to us
E didanana Devadmaata matla
now what shall we do
memu prey emcheyali
now you do not know we don't humor where they have given who has given
marry avi Akkanin Chuchina yo yavrichina ro ipruma Gurtleled
there is gold
ah Bangaram
there are cycles
marry cycles
and lot of utensils
marry chaala my little Sam
utensils
ah marala pathalu
and also chewing machines
marry chewing chips
so many things
marry Chala Savisha
then brother boxing said
sour boxing Gare Jepna
bring all of them to Jehovah's Hamah
ma Avani Koda Eho Shama
and then he got one bell dug up in the compound in the center of the compound
marry ayaka Jehovah's Hamah compound majloka Bavi Tavi vadun
very big bell
marry chaala lowtaina Bavi
and he asked them to put everything inside
marry ah vestulan ni Koda Bavi La Ve Manar
they threw gold and cycles and so many things whatever they have acquired wrongfully they have put them in that
marry anyaengi Edayte wall Pundinaro cycle lo Bangaramo my little vestulan ni Tiskocha Bavi La Ve Snar
and then brother boxing got it sealed
marry Tarvata sour boxing Gara Bavi Ni Moos Ve Snar
sealed completely
Sampoornanga Moos Ve Sar
and even now it is there as a memorial
marry ipudu Koda Akra Di Gnyapa Karthanga
they have put a little bit parapet wall
marry Dhanichutu chinnagodha
you will find a circular wall
marry ayaka Gundry Patti God
you will go to Madras Jehovah's Hamah you see that
marry Jehovah's Hamah Madras Kvalta mir Dhanichod
that is a witness of their sacrifice
Adi war yakka Stamarpanaku Thiaga Anki Sachi
it is a witness of forsaking all old things
Adi Path Sangat Lani Virchi Peta Dani Ki Sachi Gaund
here what did we read here
marry Karama men Chauten
four week twenty eight verse thirteen
mark Kirta Samtelaravam De Padamodlo
he that covered his sin shall not prosper but who so confesses and forsaken them shall have mercy
Atikramumlu Daacha Peta Warda Vardeladu what in a opuku ni Virchi Peta Warda Kanikramu Pundino
two things are there
Eka da Rende Sangat Lo Nae
we have to confess
okati mano opukuwaali
and then forsake
Tarvata Virchi Peta
what I notice is
marry Nakku Emtelsin Dend
most of our lives stopped at confession stage
Chala mana mandi mana Jitalo Opuku Ne Style Ona Agipotam
ah we have confessed no problem no doubt at all
manamood what in a opuku ta and la Eveda maina Sandeham Led
have you forsaken them
new what in a Virchi Peta
have you forsaken that anger
ah koopa nu Virchi Peta
have you forsaken that pride
ah Garavan nu Virchi Peta
have you forsaken that envy and jealousy
marry ayaka Asuino nu Virchi Peta
so many things still they are lingering on your body on your life
marry Niyaka Jitlo Inka Konni Sangat Lo Avi Tirugladata Unai
you have confessed all right but you have not forsaken them
what in a opuku Navgaani what in a Virchi Peta
word of God says
Devan walk in Jep
not only you confess
no opuku water mahtrami
but also you should forsake
what in a Virchi Peta
totally forsake those things
Sampoornanga what in a Virchi Peta
put off the old man
marry Patha Purishini Visarji
put on the new man
no tena Purishini Darinch
that is complete salvation
Adhe Sampoornamayana Raksha
it is only then the word of God says you will have mercy from the Lord
appude Devan walk in Jepindi no Prabhu Nunchi Kanikram Pundita
inta easy噶
marry this Chadati anta easy噶
underam daudam
underam chaud
Proverbs twenty eight verse thirteen
Kirtana Samethalaravam De Padamod
ah all of you
underam chaud
whoever you are
new yavravainapadiki
could be a God servant
manu Devan
or elder of the church
Sangapadainapad
are so many years of experience as they believer
marry Visvasika Enna Sanshala Anubhavunapadiki
read this please
marry Dai Chesi Chadvandi
he that covered his sin shall not prosper but who so confesses and forsaken them shall have mercy
underam kalchadha Atikramumlu Daacha Peta Warda Vardeladu what in a opuku ni Virchi Peta Warda Kanikramu Pundino
what in a
what
opuku ni
opuku ni
Virchi Peta Ward
Virchi Peta Ward
Virchi Peta Wa
Virchi Peta Wa
are you led
led
Virchi Peta Malakopmeto
Virchi Peta Kaopu Marlala
ah Yersha Dvesha Men Dukastu
ah Yersha Dvesha Men Dukastu
how that hatred is coming again
ayaka Dvesha Men Dukastu
so think about all this
E Vishyaland
he should not only forsake but also not only confess but also forsake them
manu what in a opuku water mahtrami Kada Virchi Peta
it is only then you will find mercy
appudu mahtrami no Kanikram Pundita
there could be many believers
marry Chaala mandi Visvasul Unda
who have confessed
ma opuku Nund
but you have not obtained mercy from the Lord
Ite Prabhu Nunchi no Kanikram Pundala
when will you get mercy
Eppudu manan Kanikram Pundita
it is only when you confess all those old things
marry Eppudite Avi Opuku Ni Virchi Peta Wa appudu Kanikram Pundita
apostle Paul not only confessed but also forsaken all old things
apostleena Paulu Tanapath Sangat Lani Opuku Water Mahtrami Kada What in a Koda Virchi Peta
first Timothy
mother Timothy
chapter one
mother Adjaam
verse thirteen
marry Padamodha Chunam
first Timothy one thirteen
mother Timothy Okta Adjaam Mura Chunam
there he says I obtained mercy
Akra Ain Jep Tunaadu Neenu Kropo Punditini
Kanikram
Kanikramu Punditini
verse sixteen
marry Padharachunam
sorry
so mother Timothy Okati Padhar
ah yes
ah aina nu Nichijevam Nimittamou Tanu Visasimpu War Ki Madhri Ga Undulaguna Yesu Kristu Tanapoor Namayana Deergashantamnu ah Pradhana Papiana Naayindu Kanuparchnat Lu Neenu Kanikaram Pa Baditini
yeah why do you doubt you should read
Kanikramu Punditini Neenu Kanikramu Punditini
and also it tells in first Corinthians seven twenty five and second Corinthians four one also the same thing
mark according the eight o zero nine
zero eight
zero eight
second Corinthians four one
Renda according to Nalu Okatla Koda Cheptha
he says I obtained mercy
Neenu Kanikramu Punditini
it is because he not only confessed but forsaken all the for persecuting attitudes
marry Yenduka Naga Aina marry Italnu Him Sechet Wanti Ayaka Lakshna Lani Koda Opuku Water Mahtrami Kada Atni Virchi Peta
that is how he is a new creature
Arithika Aina Nothana Sustika Chebada
all things are past away everything has become new
marry Path Sangat Lani Gatinchinae Samastamu Nothamayana
and thus a believer should walk in the newness of life according to Romans six four
my Roma Patrika Aru Nalu Prakarmi Eritiga Ok Visvasi Nothana Jevam Pundinadu Chukana Badu Da Unnaadu
now turn with me
Natapadu Chodandi
Isaiah sixty one
Yeshagrandam Aravayokta Adjaam
Isaiah sixty one
Yeshagrandam Aravayokta
verse ten
marry Padha Chunam
Isaiah sixty one verse ten
Yeshagrandam Aravayokati Padhi
I will greatly rejoice in the Lord my soul shall be joyful in my God for he hath clothed me with the garments of salvation he hath covered me with the robe of righteousness as a bridegroom decorates himself with the ornament and as a bride adoreth herself with her jewel
Chundey Yeshagrandam Aravayokati Padhi Sungaramayana Paga Darinchukana Pendlikumman Riti Gaanu Abanu Darinchukana Pendlikumartari Riti Gaanu Aina Rakshana Vestramu Naaku Darimpa Jesi Unnaadu Neeti Anu Paybatta Naaku Darimpa Jesi Unnaadu Kaaga Eho Vanupati Mahanandamto Neenu Anandichichunana Naadeveni Bati Na Atma Wallasinchichunadi
two things are mentioned here
Eka da Rende Vishyal Chapbad
when you are saved or purchased by the blood of the Lord
Eppudite Neerakshincha Badnao Gorupelaka Raktam Chetta Vimochecha Badnao
when you become his as the child of God
new Aina Vaadiga Aina Bediga Uthnao
word of God says two things God has given you
marry Devan walk in Jepindi Devadre Nid Sangat Lo Vishyal Nikichina
clothed with the garments of salvation
Rakshana Vestramu Ni Kudarimpa Jesi Unnaadu
and then hath covered me with the robe of righteousness
Neeti Anu Paybatta No Aina Darimpa Jesi Unnaadu
garments of salvation
Rakshana Vestramu
that means you are saved
Dhanar Dhamu No Rakshincha
you have confessed your sins
nee papum nee opuku
you have the assurance of sins forgiven
nee papum look chemincha Badan
that is how you got that great complete eternal salvation
Arithika Goppa Nichchamayana Sampoornamayana Rakshano Pundina
now second thing says robes of righteousness
marry Neeti Anu Paybatta
that is called the fruits of repentance
marry new Pachata Padda One Dani Kuruju
evidence of salvation
marry no Rakshana Yakka Ah Ruzulavi
two things why God has mentioned here
marry Kada Yenduka Rende Vishyal Prabhu Jepina
yeah sir yeah yavrakosun Dushtanam you always look up you are expecting somebody you are looking back always
meru Yenakke Tere
kindly you look here humbly I request you
marry
don't look here and there
itu Tiri Chodandi venakke Chod
ah sharinga Kuthandi face the pulpit and listen to the word of God
marry pulpit Vai Po Mohambeti Kuchon Dai Chesa
garments of salvation
Rakshana Vestramu
and then robes of righteousness
Neeti Anu Paybatta
there are two things mentioned separately
marry E Rende Koda Ver Verga Chapbad
that suggests to us
marry Adi Man Keen
there is a possibility that you have the garments of salvation but the robes of righteousness are lamentably missing in your life
marry Eka da new Rakshana Vestramu Lo Kaligunandi Neeti Anu Paybatta Leekonda Unde Avokash Mundi
yeah there is a possibility
marry Avokash Mundi
you have garments of salvation no doubt about it
new Rakshana Vestral Kaligunna Andla Eveda Maina Sandeham Led
you are born again baptized laid hands and prayed far by the elders of the church
new Rakshana Pundina Baptesam Deskunna Sangamlo Nota Twenty Peddalo Asthenic Shape Nijesni Me Pradanijes Naru
do you have the robes of righteousness
new Neeti Anu Paybatta Kaligunna
that means the works of righteousness
marry Dhanar Dhamu Neeti Creelnu
that means fruits of repentance
marry new Mar Manu Kuta Gina Twenty Falam
that means evidence of salvation
marry Rakshana Pundina One Dani Kuruju
if you are born again
new Tiri Genmichin
if you have garments of salvation
nee Kuh Rakshana Vestramu Nattla
you should also have robes of righteousness
new Neeti Anu Paybatta Koda Kaligun
but when we see the lives of many people
Chaala mandi Jitalam Chusse
garments of salvation is there
Rakshana Vestral Unai
robes of righteousness is the same
marry Neeti Anu Paybatta Kanapad
that is why we have problems in the assemblies everywhere in the world
ah Kanna Anubati Prabhanja Bapdanguna Sangallo Manaki Ede Samash
there are no works of righteousness
Neeti Creel Akara Kanapad
again and again we refer to that post portion in Acts chapter ten but thirty five
marry apostle Karim Lo Padha Adjaam Muppa Eight O Chunam Tiri Ki Tiri Ki marry Gurtu Just Now
whom God will accept
yavrani Prabhu Angikarista
take out that and let us all read together
Chodandi Apostle Karim Lo Padha Adjaam Muppa Eight
ten thirty five it is a very important word
marry apostle Karim Lo Padha Muppa Eight Chala Pramukkima Netwandy Vishyam
ah sorry
Chodandi Prati Janamulono Aina Kupai Padi Neeti Ga Nadchukunu Vanini Aina Angikar
the devi nation he is that who fears God and so forth the works of righteousness is accepted with him
Chodandi Prati Janamulono Aina Kupai Padi Neeti Ga Nadchukunu Vanini Aina Angikarinchino
what a tragedy it would be
marry the anta Vishada
when the Lord would come again
Prabhu Tiri Gavushina
you have garments of salvation
nee Kuh Rakshana Vestramu Nund
but the robes of righteousness are not there
marry Neeti Vestramu Levo
there are no works of righteousness
marry Neeti Creel Kanapad
there are no evidence of salvation
Rakshana Pundina Naanika Adara
you will be left behind
new Virchi Peta Badta
you can never be taken with him
new Ainta Part Tiskun Kuna Bhaavada
that verse is a proof
marry
chapter ten but thirty five
marry apostle Karim Padha Muppa Eight O Chunam Aadar
one brother said
oksaor Jepna
concerning one senior brother
marry aka Senior Sawadun Guren
brother he got full word brother he has got word of God full
marry Sawadada Aina Devan Walk him Baga Aina Tels Sampoornanga Tels
Aina Kundi
Aina Kundi
but he is not a righteous man
Ite Aina Neeti Mandru Kada
you understand the difference
marry E Vedchasa Mikar Dham
there are many people in our several shape
manahavasal Chala mandi
balla good chapter Prasangal
balla good Prasangan Jep
they call it powerful message
ma Dhanne Mar Shakti Anta Maina Vartam
deep message
lowtaina Vartam Armentam
but what is important is
Ite Pramukkima
you should have works of righteousness
new Neeti Creel Kaligun Dali
how about your behavior
Niyaka Pravatan Guren
how do you behave with those who come near you
Neetagirka Chinu War Ta Nu Ela Pravatist
whoever you are
new yavravainapad
whatever you are
new yavravainapad
think about your life
Nijitam Guren Chalo Chinchu
repent and come to the Lord Jesus Christ
Pachata Padi Tiri Prabhu Dagirka Ra
then Lord will accept you
appudu Prabhu Ni Angikar
and give you grace
ah Aina Kropi Star
it is then you obtain mercy
appudu new Kanikram Pundita
by by grace we are saved through faith
marry
reason to it
Ephesal Krasinpatrika Rende Yenli Prakaram Visvasam Dara Kropachate Manam Rakshincha
ah you are saved
new Rakshincha Bad
but what is next
Ite Dan Tarvata
you should have robes of righteousness
new Neeti Vestramu Kaligun Dali
somehow you have lost them somewhere
marry Edo Rithika Ekra E Vestral No
by your willful disobedience
marry new Eriki Eriki Avide Techup
by your negligence you have lost them
nee Nir laksham Cheta Watni Kulpayna
you think that you are moving forward
new marry nee Kali Guna Vani Mundu Kell
but you are tied up in the world
Ite new Loka Nikke Lokam To Jata Chebada
totally you are tied up in the world
new Lokam To Ante Chebada
you are not able to obey to the word of God
marry Devaneka Walk Yaniknu Vide
you are not able to do the commandments of the Lord
Devanaka Agyanu No Patinch
when Samuel came to Saul
marry Samielu Saul Dagirka
Saul was to demolish the Amalekites then he goes and tells him I have completed the commandment of the Lord I have performed performed the commandment of the Lord
marry Saul Amalekela Nande Haatham Chesi Samiel Dagirka Chi marry Eho Vaichina Agyan Neen Sampoornanga Nerve China Un Jepna
but he has not
Ite Aina Sampoornanga
animals make noise at that time
marry Asami Lo Vereswaral Vinavartana
animals
ya Jantul
he saved something precious for him
marry Aina Kuni Prasastamayana Vani Konni Jantul
so there was only partial obedience
Akada Maripakshikumayana Vide
maybe you are partially obedient to the word of God
Bousa New Devan Walk Yaniki Maripakshikanga Vide Techup
King Saul lost his kingship kingdom and the people
Lord is going to come again.
When he would come again. Not only you love him. You should also love his appearing. You should love his appearing also. We read that in 2 Timothy 4:8. How do we understand that? You love him. But you don't love his appearing. One mother made nice boondialadu. And then gave to his son. He enjoyed it. Very tasty ladu. Then the mother said. My son, I know when to give you. I know when to give you. You don't touch it. And then he kept it on the almera. Dabba almera. Then she went to the market for some purpose. Then this boy thought, I have an opportunity now. Then he took a stool. Kept it near the almera. He got onto that stool. Took out the dhabba. And then took out one ladu. When ladu has come in his hand. Marie, a ladu, tan chetha lakuchin tharvata. Marie, par man talub dhairskul. Wal amma jeshindhi. Wal amma jeshindhi. Wal ammane, yatla jousundadain. Ladu jeshulavdi. Ladu jethulavdi. Dabba akav jeshulavdi. Wal ammane, elaj jousavna. Yatla jousundad. Ata jasavna, yes pravachana. That boy was caught red-handed. This boy loves his mother very much. Because she takes care of him. But because of his misdeed. This boy does not like her appearance at that time. Marie, e kumar bal du, a samilath, a thalli raavdaaniki istabadale. Wal amma, kar pratekshamavadi kistamle. Wal amma, kar pratekshamavadi kistamle. Well, you come on the wrong time. See, that is how you will be caught. That is why confess your secret false. Whoever you are. People may think that you are a very godly person. People may think that you are a pious God servant. People may think that you are a very saint. Marie, nu chesetwanti, kriyalu, yantoschadvi. But there is something unconfessed in your life. There is guilt in your heart. God knows everything. Nothing is hidden from him. Come to the Lord Jesus Christ. Behold the lamb that takes away the sin of the world. Behold the lamb of God. You come to him. The very sight of him will convict you of your sinful life. Then come to the Lord Jesus Christ. John's Gospel 6:37. If you come to him, he will not catch you away. Whoever you are. You may have the garments of salvation. Do you have the ropes of righteousness? Do you have the works of righteousness? Can you be called as a righteous person? Think about it. Can you be called a righteous person? Lord himself may speak to you. Shall we pray? Our loving, heavenly Father. Our gracious and wonderful King God. Can thee for the word ministered unto us? What we have heard may continue to ring in our hearts and bring guilt in our hearts. Prava, yedaitem vinnam, a maatal edatagama chavulo, gingurmanuganugaka. Convey trust by thy word. Prava, ni vaakyam dharamamunnu opimpa chendhi. So that we may confess and be cleansed and washed and purged by the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ. Aritiga, marie, ni raktham chetha, mam kadagabadi, shuddi karinchabadi, pavitra parshabardhuma gaka. Pray with thanksgiving in Jesus' precious name. Yesu Kristu Pravari, prasastamay namumlo adigavaidh konchinaam thandre. Amen.
Family prayer. Konni nimishaloni, mugincha badiddi. Majlo, kasta. Och chenna paadu vaadukuntam. Adi kaalam nunchi. Madhiti paatiki manamu. Ramakethani chipaduthosthunam. Madhiti vachinamu. Naalga vachinamu, yedavachinam. Vakiti naalgu yedu. Vaksari, a shankshis lane valtis kondi, tiskelibun. Naalga vachinam, madhiti vachinam, naalgu yedu.
Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Paramunu vedi uvikke tinchi siluvalo praadamu. Narpinsitivi paramunu vedi uvikke tinchi siluvalo praadamu narpinsitivi. Ni rakthamulu nanokadigitivi. Ni rakthamulu nanokadigitivi. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Rupadra vamulanundi kapaditivi. Upadra vamulanundi kapaditivi. Ni shaktitho nanoprathikintitivi. Ni shaktitho nanoprathikintitivi. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Paramunu undi purashapthamuto arayuno Yesu. Arbhatam paramunu undi purashapthamuto arayuno Yesu. Arbhatamuto tanatavam namo keertabadhamo. Ganamugam namo keertabadhamo. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Manamu prathikina. Arachanu. Manamu prathikina. Prabhu ni korake chani pooinanu. Ayenakorake manamu prathikina. Prabhu ni korake chani pooinanu. Ayenakorake. Niratamu manamu Yesu ni varamu. Niratamu manamu Yesu ni varamu. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Na matukai te pratukuta kriste. Saavaitena ku entolabam. Na matukai te pratukuta kriste. Saavaitena ku entolabam. Yesu tonunda na ken tonelu. Yesu tonunda na ken tonelu. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Na pappamula samiinchitivi. Pema tonanu parunechitivi. Na pappamula samiinchitivi. Pema tonanu parunechitivi. Devuni intilo nanochetitivi. Devuni intilo nanochetitivi. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Ni margamu no vadali potini viduvakananu. Vedakidetchitivi. Ni margamu no vadali potini viduvakananu. Vedakidetchitivi. Sahavasamu lo nanochetitivi. Sahavasamu lo nanochetitivi. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Aparamu nibhalamu. Agamya mu ni gnanamu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakku stuti stotramulu. Na priyavi bhuna ku mahimagana talu.
Now we will have a brief family prayer. Why we have family prayers here? So that you may practice it at home. As family of God who have gathered here. As a family of God as we have gathered. Who have family prayers. That is what brother Baxing has introduced whenever we have special meetings, convocations, whenever we have get together, youth camps, we have family prayers. Marie, saudubaxingaru, dinni paricham jeshnar, epriaitem manamu, parshiddha samajakodikalga, youth meetingga, prachekodikalga, kaligavastamo, apudumanakutumbapradhanakaliguntam. So that you could also practice it at home. If I ask you how many of you have family prayers, how many hands will go up? Think about it. Those families who cannot have family prayers, they cannot happily, harmoniously, unitedly live together with joy. Marie, yavari jivitalaithe kutumbapradhana var kaligundaro, a kutumbamlo shanti santoshum ahaladkaranga, marie var jivinchaler kalisi. That is very, very important. Now shall we turn to Romans 14:8. Far whether we live, we live unto the Lord; and whether we die, we die unto the Lord. Whether we live or therefore or die, we are the Lords. Chorandi, Roma patrika padnalken, manamu prathikinenu, prabhu korakvassame bhathukuchinamu, chani pooinanu, prabhu kosame chani pochunamu, kaabati manamu prathikinenu, chani pooinanu, prabhu varamai unnamu. Let us all read these verses together please. Manandramo kalisi chadukundam, i vaakyam. Manamu prathikinenu, prabhu kosame prathukuchinamu, chani pooinanu, prabhu kosame chani pochunamu, kaabati manamu prathikinenu, chani pooinanu, prabhu varamai unnamu. That is where we have our ideal Christian life. Mundavalsina vidhavaina, Christ of Jivitam. Manamu, undavalsina, Christ of Jivita Vidhanamithi. That is how we should live. It is a great responsibility. That is what we have put in that song, verse 6. Marie, adhe, yekka paatalo, arocharnumalo petnam. Yeah, so that we may remind it again and again. Wherever you are, whatever you are, we belong to him. Marie, nu ekadonna, nu etwanti, paristtilona, nu prabhu kuchendena vaadabo. We live unto the Lord. And we die unto the Lord. That is the ideal situation of Christian life. You have a great responsibility as families. Marie, kutumbamga, manaku goppa bajjatanu kaligunti. We have a little flock at home. Husband is the pastor and wife is pastoral ma. Marie, bartha pastra garu, barya pastramgaru. You have to take care of your little flock at home. If you have failed there, you have failed everywhere. Marie, nu akkadaganaka tapipote, nu prati chota tapipota. Inject spiritualism into the lives of children. As you read, he will also read. As you pray, they will also pray. As you have burden to ponder upon the word, they will also meditate the word of God. Meeru devanekka vaakyani janinchinapru, wal kodha devanekka vaakyani. As you have urged to run to the house of God before time, they will also have that similar thing. Kaavati, devanekka vaakamandraniki vellalane, athruthu nu parigathkochinapru, wal kodha ade vidhanamlo ochavarguntar. I and my five children. Even after my wife was called to glory. We go half an hour before to the church. Marie, sanganike, okaraganta mundeveltam. We maintain it. That is how you will have urge if you have got not only garments of salvation but also ropes of righteousness. Imi, mana jivitamlo rakshana vastaramlu kaligunti maatrame kaadu, niethi vastaramlu kodha kaligundalan. You will have burden to go to the house of God. When will I go to have fellowship with the fellow saints? When will I go to enter into the portals of the house of the living God? Neen epru sajiraina, devanekka mandripa avarnaloni kivella kanabada. When Jacob dreamed on his way to Padanaram. Jacob dreamed on his way to Padanaram. Marie, padanaramu kivela etwanti margamlo, yaakobu ko darshinam kaligindi. He woke up. It is a terrible place. Nothing but the, this is the house of God gateway to heaven. Idi devani mandrima gani, vera kiti kaadu, idi paralokupu gavini idean jepna. It is a wonderful revelation to Jacob. Marie, yaakobuki adbutamaina pratekshatapundadu. God not only revealed to him that is the house of God. Marie, devu tanu bailparshkoda maatrame kaadu, devani mandru pratekshatankoda bailparsh. And also God revealed to Jacob what is the purpose of the house of God. Marie, devani, mandrima kuddeshmenta kodha yaakobu ko bailparshad. To prepare and send the people of God to heaven. Marie, devanekka prazalnu sidhparachiparalokaniki pumpinchad. House of God is the gateway to heaven. Marie, devanekka mandrumu paralokupu gavini. It is here you are serviced as our cars and vehicles are serviced in the servicing stations. Our cars and vehicles are serviced in the servicing stations. So also, in the house of God, we are spiritually serviced and prepared for the coming of the Lord. Marie, car shedlo, car lo, marie, ivani kodha yereetiga service cheshta unnamu, alage devanekka mandrima lo kodha, manamu atmi mainetwanti yekka service cheshta unnamu. We have a great responsibility for our children. Marie, mana bedelakupatla, goppa bajjatanu manam kaligunnam. How much you are praying for your children? Ni pillalakoraku nu yentaka pradhan cheshta unnamu. Not only that, at the time of the lunch, I will give him lunch, you pray two, three words. And when you put him in the bus, you pray for some time. But how much literally you are praying for your child? Marie, aksharadanga, ni bedelakoraku nu yentaka pradhan cheshta unnamu. So we are counseled in the word of God. Devanekka vaakyamlo manaku salha chappabaduthindi. You should have real burden for your children. Ni yekka pillalakoraki nizamaina baramnu kaligunti. If you have that burden. Ni kaa baramunti. You cannot have proper sleep. And you will have lot of burden to pray for your children. Ni pillalakoraku pradhanchayalanee adikumaina barani nu kaliguntao. See, lamentations. Marie, vilapagaitamalu. Chapter 1:4. The ways of joy do mourn because none come to this solemn feast. All her gates are desolate, her priests sigh, her virgins are afflicted, and she is in bitterness. Chorandi, vilapagaitamalu, madhiti ajjam, naalga vachinam. Niyamaka kotamalako yavarnu raaru ganuka, siyonu margamalu pralapijichinavi, patanapu gumulaniu paadai poenu, yaajakalu niturpu vichichunaru, daani kanyakalu dukkakrantulairi, adi vyakkula barithurala enu. You should have burden for such situations. Marie, a yekka paristhitul visshame manam baram kaligundali. Now see, chapter 2:19, lamentations. Marie, vilapagaitalu, renda ajjam, pandamdevachinam. Arise, cry out in the night, in the beginning of the watches, pour out your lion heart like water before the face of the Lord. And lift up thy hands toward him for the life of thy young children that faint for hunger on the top of every street. Ni ulaychi, rey madhiti jamuna morapettimo, neelu kummarinchinatlu, prabhu sanidini, ni hoodiyamu kummarinchimo, ni paspillala pranamukoraku, ni chethalu ayana tatuyettemo, prati vidi mogano, aakaliguni var moochilichunaru. Arise, cry out in the night. And pour out your, pour out thy heart. See, that is how you should have burden for your children. Marie, irithiga, mana pillalakorakainetwanti, baram manam kaligundali. Midnight. One brother testified. Many times it so happened. Midnight, he will get up. And wake up his wife. Both are very godly parents. Children are sleeping. These two get up in the middle of the night. And they say, let us pray for our children. In the silent night. When there is complete peace around them. They pray unto the Lord. They cry unto the Lord for every child God has given unto them. Marie, prabhu var kichina, prati bedekoraku var morapettar. What are you doing? Do you have real burden for your children? Have you ever, I want to ask you one question, have you ever fasted, prayed for your children? Marie, neen okka prashna adagalan kuntenanu, ni bedelakoraku yepurainana upavasamundi pradhanjeshnava? Maybe some are doing. I know some families, they do that. Their children are very much blessed. What Job was doing? Chapter 1:5. And it was so, when the days of their feasting were gone above, that Job sent and sanctified them, and rose up early in the morning, and offered burnt offerings according to the number of them all. For Job said, it may be that my sons have sinned and cursed God in their heart, thus did Job continually. Chorandi, vari vari vindudinamalu puurtikaaga, yeobu tanakumarlu papum chesi, tamohrudhimalu devani dushinchitharemo ani varini piluvanampinchii, varini pavitra parachi arnohdayamune lechi, varilo okokkani nimittamai, dahana balina arpinchichu vachinu, yeobu nichemu alagu chayichundenu. Job was offering burnt offering for every child. Prati bedekorake, yeobu dahana balara pincha. Early morning he will rise up. He was so much burden for the children. Ayana tanabedel visshame yantov. That they walk in the ways of the Lord. The children that we have are the future of the assembly. Marie, manamu kaligunnetwanti, bedelu, sanganiki, maru, boushet. As they grow to be the responsible brethren. Some of them could be elders of the church and even God servants.
सम ऑफ़ देम कुड़ बेल्डर्स ऑफ़ डी चर्च एंड इवन गॉड सर्वेंट
कोन्त मंद बाज्यत कलिगिन्न सहादर पदलावच कोन्त मंद सावकलावच
इट इज डी हेरिटेज, गॉड हैव गिवन तू यू अकॉर्डिंग तू शाम 127 वर्स 3
मरी कीर्तन नोटर वेयर एड आयदोचन प्रकारणगा यहवा मनकु वार इच्छिना स्वास्यम वाल
डेट इव्हेर वहाँ विल हैव बर्डन फॉर डी स्वास्य
आस्वास्यान्ने मनमु जागर्थक
ड्यूरिंग डीज़ मीट इज टेक डी डिसीशन
मरी इकुड़कलो नेतीर्मान
गॉड, सो फ़ार आई हैव फेल्ड इन डिस
ओ प्रभा इन्तो वारकु इविष्णलन तपिपया
नौ आई विल टेक डिस वेरी सीरियसली
प्रभा इप्पनिंचि दिन नेनु तेवरमयन विधान
एंड आई विल प्रेय फॉर माय चिल्ड्रन
ना पिल्ललकोरकु नेनु प्राधन
आई विल फास्ट एंड प्रेय फॉर माय चिल्ड्रन
नेनु उपवासमुंडी ना पिल्ललकोरकु
एंड डी मिड ऑफ़ डी नाइट, आई विल रेज़ अप एंड प्रेय फॉर देम
मरी मज़रात्रिवेलन नेनु ले चे ना पिल्ललकोरकु प्राधन जिस्तान
डेट आई वांट तू टेल यू, योर चिल्ड्रन विल ग्रो स्टडील इन डी हाउसहोल्ड ऑफ़ गॉड
कावटी नेनु अपुर चप्पड़गुन्न अपुर मे पिल्ललो स्त्रंगाउंडी आशीर्वादिंच बट
शाल वही प्रेय
प्राधन जिस्कुंदाम
अवरलविंग, हेवली फादर
मा प्रेम गला परलोकु
ओवर ग्रेचियस एंड वंडरफुल्किंग गॉड
माक्रप गला अद्भुत कार्यमल चे देव
थैंक दी फॉर डी वर्ड मिनिस्ट्रेट एंड रोज़ राइट फ्रॉम मॉर्निंग
उदेकाल निंचे इन्तो वारकु चेपड़नी वाक्य परिचरियन बट
मॉर्निंग मीटिंग एंड अलसो 3:30 मीटिंग एंड अलसो इवनिंग मीटिंग
उदेकालम कुड़कलो नु मज़ानकालम मुरुनार कुड़कलो नु सायंकालम कुड़कन बट मेकुंद
वाटर डी वर्ड एंड ब्रिंग फॉर्थ फ्रूट
प्रभा अक्का वाक्यान्की नीर कट्टी फलिंपच
डी चिल्ड्रन इन ओवर होम्स आर डी फ्यूचर ऑफ़ डी असम्बली
माय इंटिदेगर ना ट्वेंटी पिल्ललो संगमयक्का बौशेत
ओर रॉड हेल्प डेट एवरी पेरेंट मेबी रियलाइज़ इट
प्रभा प्रति कुटुम्ममु दिन तलिदानलु गुत्तरगुनाटलु चेय
एंड प्रिपेयर्ड देम एस सच
मरी आर इरीतिगा वारनी सिद्धपर्च
एंड दे वर्क अवाउट डी रेस्पांसिबिलिटी विथ फेयर एंड ट्रम्बलिंग
मरी इरीतिगा वार अक्का रक्षणनु भयमतो वनकुतो
दे मेबी अलसो ब्रिंग अप डी चिल्ड्रन हुआ लाइन हेरिटेज विथ फेयर एंड ट्रम्बलिंग
मरी नी स्वास्यमयन ट्वेंटी बिडलकोड वारु भयमतो वनकुतो प्रभा इधि चेदरगा
ओर रॉड गिव अस गुड अमाउंट ऑफ़ रेस्ट डिस नाइट
प्रभा इरात्रिकाल सामीलो मंच विष्रांधि दायच
यू विल हैव डी डाय विल, वेक अप टुमारो
नी चित्तमयते उदेकालम माकु मेलको दायच
नौ डेट वहाँ विल डू डाय विल
मरी नी चित्तमु चेयन
प्रेय वन्स अगेन, ऑल डोस वहाँ नॉट वेल टच देम, हील देम, रेस्टोर देम तू नार्मल हेल्थ
प्रभा मरे किसार यावरैत अनारोग्यंग उन्नार वारनी ताकंडी स्वस्थपर्च
डोस वहाँ आयज़, ओर रॉड बी ग्रेचियस अंत तू देम डी पॉवर ऑफ़ रेजोरेक्शन मेबी डेयर पोर्शन
यावरैत वृद्धाप्यमलो उन्नार बलहिनतलो नी क्रपवार कनुग्रिंचन नी पुनर्दान शक्तित वारलो पोय
प्रिपेयर्ड फॉर डी मिनिस्ट्री डेट इज डी हेड ऑफ़ आज
मा मुंदुन ना परिचरियकोरके ममल सिद्धपर्च
प्रेय विथ थैंक्सगिविंग इन डी प्रेश्यस एंड फीट नेम ऑफ़ डी लॉर्ड एंड डी बेबीयर, जिसज
मा प्रभुनु रक्षकड़यन यसु कृष्ट प्रभारी मधुरमयन नामुलो कृतिता पुरकुम गाड़ीगिवेरुकुंचन नामु तंड्री, आमिन प्रभयन यसु कृष्ट वारी परिषद नामुलो मे कुशुभमलु तेले परस्तुंत यसु प्रभु, रेमुन मेट मा आहुआनन मनिंसी रागलिनंदके प्रभुन स्तुतिस्तुंत रेप उदेकालम पति घंटलकु इक्कर आराधना कार्यक्रम योवनिसिल आरंभ मैद मूर्ति नालु एटला समयान पाटिच्छ कछितमगरे पतिन्तीके आराधना आरंभ मैद कनका 10:00 के समयानिकी रावटनिकी मेरू प्रायत्थम चेय तरवात सायंकालम माकु मनंदरकी 7:00 घंटलकी मर्ला चिवरी मीटिंग, कृतिगिन्न दम मीटिंग प्रेम अविन्द मीटिंग अन्नी कलिपी रेप रात्रे जरिगित कनक 7:00 घंटलकी प्रभु इ मीटिंगसलु चेस्न सहायन बट दायवसेवकलु, दायवजनलु प्रस्तुत मनम अध्ययन उन्नडानिकी प्रभु अनुकोल पर्चन मंच वातारणम चेन अंदुकु आयन दया अनुभविंचन अन्नी प्रेमलु अन्नी मेल तल्ल रेप रात्रि अंदरकी प्रत्यक्षमयन विन्दु एयरपार्ट चेपड़ ग्यापकम जिस्कुन अंदर पालपनंदी मित पाट इनकमी स्नेहितलनु, रक्त सम्मंदिकलनु स्रेय लाशलु तिस्क देवन दासलु रेप दिनमंत गोड़ा रेप मूर्त मानालु उन्टे मनकु आराधनलो आराधन वर्तमानम, प्रभु बलवर्तमानम फाइनल मेसेज अन्नी मूर्त वर्तमानम कोड़ा उन्निद अंदवालम मनम मज़ान मीटिंग रेप कलिगुंडकु पोच मध्यान मीटिंग कलिगुंड पोच निकंड मूर्त वर्तमानल मनकी वर्षिप टाइमलो नी कंप्लीट ग्यापकुंच कुन्न तरवात मुनिपल्ले वेल्टुन बिडल तुम्मिदिनिंची पति घंटल वरकु वर्षिप टाइम अकड़ कलिगुंड मी कानक अकड़े एयरपार्ट चेस्कुन 10:00 की अकनिंची रामबाबु आटोतो मेरू 10:30 कल अकड़ कोच अबुड़ मल्ला इकड़ आराधना मेरी पालपन्ताल, रोटिलो पालपन्तार वाक्यमु कोड़ा वेंटार अकड़म मीदेगरा देप वेलिगिन्न अटलो उन्निद मल्ला इकड़ कोच, प्रभु सन्निदलो गड़बतार सेम अत्लाने बाबुराव सहादर भावपुरी कालने आल्तार पुन्नुरु मुंस्पल ऑफिस पकनुना ब्रांच आरंभ चेट नरिंदी अकड़की वेल्ली मेरू कोड़ा 9:00 तू 10:00 अकड़ गड़पी 10:30 कल मेरी अकड़ कोच तू विलर्स तो मेरी अकड़ कोच अकड़ ओचे बिडल गोड़ा मेर 9:00 तू 10:00 वर्षिप गड़प आर इरीतिगा स्थानिक यूरिन्डु ब्रांचलकी मेरी वेल्ली मी बाज्यतलु नु पर्पुन्न चेस्कुन आविश्वासलु दिस्कुन अकड़ कर अबुड़ वारु आराधन वर्तमानम वेंटार बलवर्तमानम, मे फाइनल वर्तमान रात्रि कंदरम मनकल्स तम 7:00 घंटलकी विन्दु पल्लु उन्टे, अपल्लु मनम पालपन्ताली गुत्तच रेप रात्रि मनंदरम मल्ला स्थानिक संघलु चुट्ट पकल सेवकलु रेप रात्रि कल्स इबुड़ अंदरम यदा विधिगा सिस्टर सिक्कड़े बोजन ब्रदर्स अंदर किंदिकी बागन कल्तार दायवसेवकलु उरुध्दलायना कद्दवालु सिस्टर्सु किंदिने टेबल्स मी एयरपार्ट चेपड़ जरिगित अकड़ बोजन नान कोच ग्यापकुंच कुन्न अंकल आरगिन कोरकु रेप रिदनम बलपर्च मनम जो वाड़बड़ अतरवात रेप रितो रेप रात्रितो इकड़ा प्रभु महिमातमय परिचरी कंप्लीट चेपड़ तरवात सोमवारम उदेकालम विष्रांधि स्कुंडार सोमवारम रात्रि कत्तपालम सियोनु प्राधना मंदिरमलो मंदिरमलोने मीटिंग एयरपार्ट चेपड़ उन्निद स्पेशल पींटिंग अदि कत्तपालमलो शाले मुल रावच मेम योवनिसिल चौस्ताम, अकड़ा गो रावच कनक अदि विश्वासलु तो वरन्ना स्पेशल गज़रुत्तुन गदनी मेम गो रावच हॅप्पी गिरा रावच एम्परालेड अदि गुत्तच कुन्न रेप रात्रि वरक इकड़ाईपत्ति कंप्लीट सोमवारम कत्तपालमु स्पेशल मीटिंग उन्निद मंदिरमलो जयन् रावगारुंटारा प्लेसलो गुत्तच अतरवात मंगलवारम, बुद्धवारम मुन्नंगिलो मंगलवारम, बुद्धवारम मुन्नंगिलो प्रचेकमयन कुड़कल जरुत रेणु दिनालु, आर रेणु दिनालु गोड़ा अकड़ अंकल उठार, ग्यापकुंच कुन्न गुत्तच प्राधन चेय मच गोद पारगोड इन्विटेशन इच्छलेर आहुआनु असरवनिंगसलो नवार आश्चर्य नवार विश्वासलु तो अकड़ कोली वाक्य बन ग्यापकुंच कुन्न प्राधन, आशीर्वाद प्राध, चेवर प्राधन, आशीर्वाद प्राध
नौ मेरी ग्रेच ऑफ़ डी लॉर्ड एंड डी बेबीयर, जिसज लव ऑफ़ गॉड, कमियन ऑफ़ डी होली स्पिरिट, बी विथ अस नौ एंड फ़ार एवर मोर आमिन महादेव विवेक महादेव विवेक सर्वदर्शी, सर्वज्ञ सर्वदर्शी, सर्वज्ञ सर्वयापी येसुनीवे सर्वयापी येसुनीवे महादेव विवेक महादेव विवेक
देचेसी यवनस्तलु नदिवेशलो उन्ना परिचरियक साकरिच माकु सहायन चेय वंड चाल्फ पन्लुकेन, अकड़ चापल दीटनकेन हेल्प चेय, देचेसी तत्वार विर तुरगा बोजन गुच तुरगा मीटिंग टिकले रस्तिस्कुंडार मल्ला रेप टिक मेरू सिद्धपर्च रेस्ट डलाड मेरू कोड़ा जप कवाल तुरगा मन चापल दिस्ते, पाटल पाड देवन सेवकल पाटल पार्टुंतार चापल दियाल, तुरकार्पेट दियोत्तु चापल दिन धन्यवाद